The recording, which would probably have any oral communications if there are any. The April twenty second, twenty twenty one special meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. Uh, we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by interim city manager Vaughn Norris.
Good afternoon, everyone. Please stand. If you can place your right hand over your heart, please repeat after me. My pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's take a look, see. Um, Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three, the public shall directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting.
Okay, do we have any communications?
We have one. Um, let me call her. Give me a sec.
Okay, um, all members are present. Okay, all members are present. Councilmember Angie Race English and Councilmember David Patterson. Councilmember Patterson, is your mic working?
Yes, my mic's here.
Uh, Councilmember Race English, is your mic working now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, cool. We just wanted to check. All right. Let's proceed with the oral communications.
Okay, I have Ms. Williams on the phone. She's our only speaker.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Good afternoon.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Ms. Williams. You have three minutes.
Okay, happy birthday to everyone. This is Lieutenant Williams. I just wanted to commend our council people for uh being attended in this uh with this debate group. It is very important that we uh pay attention and listen closely because uh Mr. Bigay, the debate group have been part of our community for a very long time. And it's important that we uh do accordingly, not only for the mall site, for other incoming developers. Because times has changed. This pandemic has truly changed uh the way business is done, is going to be done here in the uh long run. As our nation or the world opens back up. So even if they would like to sell their property, and we have to remember, this is Mr. Bigay Group's house. This is his house. The city does not own it. And over the years, it has been feared and spoken out, and the community has even spoken. And probably, why wouldn't he want to uh sell it? Because we've even had some um neighbors calling in and saying, why would you want to do uh business with a criminal or whatever, ray, 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 ray? But uh things happen in people's life. And true enough, they didn't go through with the twenty sixteen plan because he was indicted by the FBI. So when your boss is indicted, the whole company kind of is on a hold. However, it's good that they're coming back to the uh turntables, asking our zoning people, asking our council to get in there with the zoning codes and update them. And like I say, Mr. Beck uh has has really uh showed some of his expertise. And one thing he said that has been uh really rendered out through that uh chamber is build it and they will come. So have an open mind and 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 let these experts relate to you what needs to be done and even have them to bring to you, even the intern attorney bring to you what have been implemented for zoning and broaden the aspect of it that other communities, Long Beach, Inglewood, all of them had to update their codes in order to let these developers come in and do their thing and not feel that they're gonna be uh not doing the right thing that the city is allowing them to do. It's very important. And once again, I I commend you. But uh in the meantime, have our new manager, interim manager to get in there and search what legislation can be done for when you do have a big developer such as the debate group to uh have their property sitting and to uh put a lien on it. That that would be a good idea as well. However, and the community is buzzing about, remember, you want housing there. There's a train coming through there. Not so many seniors gonna be comfortable, even regular residents, comfortable with that train coming through there right at their apartment.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you. For the call, please let some uh citizens of the community be a part of that board. Keep us a good word. We love you, City Council. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
So that was the only uh communication, correct? All right, thank you. So we are going to proceed with the discussion in open session. Is that correct? Uh, Mr. City Interim City Manager and Mr. Interim City Attorney, is that correct? Open session?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just so, so let's, let me, I'm shifting between, okay. So the discussion today, item number four, is council study session regarding the development of the Hawthorne Mall Site located at one two one two six Hawthorne Boulevard. And the discussion is with the planning department and the city's consultant, uh, Mr. Christopher Beck, who belongs to Newmark, Knight and Frank. Okay, the floor is open, folks.
Thank you.
Mr. Beck, maybe, Mr. Beck, maybe you can tell us what you got first, uh, like a brief?
If that's okay with the group, I'd love to start. Um, thank you again um to the council for allowing uh the continued work session as it relates to this uh critical piece of uh real estate that's in the heart of the city of Hawthorne. Um, I want to start by saying, I think we're making some decent progress. Um, and the goal for today, from my perspective and in advising, um, would be to attempt to establish a path of um what uh council would like to see on the site so that I can work with um the owner of the property in a uh work session that we have scheduled for Monday, excuse me, um, in an effort to help guide uh them into a recalibration of the previously provided plan for the site. Um, I will continue with, real briefly, something that I've said, I believe, in all the meetings we've had is, we have a unique opportunity to take a twenty twenty-five acre parcel and work with the private landholder um to establish a new um project that anchors or can anchor the city from a business standpoint, a open space standpoint, a destination standpoint. Um, it's really um from my perspective, up to the group, the council, um, to determine what your vision is and what uh you would like to see there. Um, I do know that we had talked about in our meeting uh on Monday about updating the specific plan, um, and the entitlements and whatnot. I do believe moving on those concurrent paths, subject to, you know, hence why we're here today, moving on those concurrent paths to establish what uh the council would like um and uh and and be able to proceed accordingly.
Anybody, I guess I'll.
To the chair, to the chair.
I was gonna start off with the question, and I'll pass it on to Mons- uh, Councilman Montero, and then uh, was that you, Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Okay, so um, I just wanted to go ahead and uh just comment that the last meeting, um, I just, my question is, and uh, my concern is that they don't have anybody they want to uh, that uh, they, they want the entitlements to sell the property. And so I think what we had originally directed them was to give us an idea. So how the heck, how the heck are we gonna be giving entitlements and zoning? If we don't have a general idea what their interest is, I think they're putting the cart between the horse. That's kind of my alteration from the last meeting. Councilmember Montero, and then Councilmember Patterson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. How come this thing doesn't, I don't see myself? What happened? All right, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you at least. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Uh, no, but what what I would like to say, uh, Mr. Mayor, that uh I want to hear from our planning department because since uh the last meeting with Charles Company, right, uh, they brought the idea about amend the downtown specific plan and also some of our zoning laws to accommodate some of the potential ideas that they presented to us on the first meeting. That was the uh, you know, all these uh, they call it the flex, flex users, right? Uh, such as, you know, the uh, they talk about to create the different type of uh industry in the, in that mall such as the, you know, of course, you know, the mixed-use residential village, uh, create a media and production type of environment, a tech office campus, red and industrial. So those kind of things, Greg, uh, I want us to, 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 to give us an insight a little bit because we know, you know, our specific downtown specific plan, like I mentioned before, you know, call for uh twenty-four uh unit per acres uh when Charles has proposed that ridiculous number of seventy-nine per acre, right? So let's start talking about uh on the, on, from the planning department view, what can we actually do or not do uh to see if there is a a leeway or a legal way that we could begin to think about uh amend the downtown specific plan for these uh uh called flex users and the zoning code. So that's what we should be talking about uh this afternoon. Thank you.
So do you wanna, so you wanna pass that on to uh
Greg?
Planning Director?
Yes.
Okay, Planning Director, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Mayor and uh every member of the council. Thanks for uh inviting the planning department be a part of this discussion. Um, I did uh attend the last meeting. I I was observing in the background. Um, I I will tell you that one of the things that stood out to to me was their mentioning of needing a flexible office space. I and I I will tell you that your specific plan um and our zoning code uh is pretty flexible. Um, and I was surprised to hear uh that comment. Uh, now, their land use attorney, uh, Ms. Camacho, she's very well respected. And so maybe I didn't hear all the details uh that she wanted to say. Uh, but when she had mentioned uh wanting to be more specific on the office space, uh, your code currently as it's written allows for office space uh in the zone. Um, the specific plan uh mentions uh flexible office space, um incubator type office space. Um, the municipal code allows for interpretation of office space. So whether you wanted to attract creative office space, high-tech office space, um, you know, something that we don't yet know of the name of, it could be X-Force Creative Office Space. Um, that's an interpretation that that's done in planning, and our code allows for that. And so you could have all types of office space uh in this mall site. Um, and more specifically, again, your downtown specific plan is pretty broad, and and it allows a lot of uses as it stands now. Uh, I thought it was pretty well done as I've gone through it. And I know most of you, I think at least four, maybe all of you participated in that, in that specific plan. I I believe I even saw pictures of uh then Treasurer Patterson uh attending those community meetings. So I think each and every one of you had input and 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 I commend you for that because that was a big process and it's a long process. Um, and it's very broad and allows a lot of different uses. Um, when I first came aboard and when you first started talking about the mall site, uh, we engaged a consultant. Um, and at the same time that you were looking for an economic development consultant, Chris Beck. Um, and uh we were able to come up with a, I guess we put a picture uh to to what your specific plan would allow. And um, you know, that that incorporated a hotel, retail, restaurant, residential, open space, pedestrian access, bicycle access. Um, even uh a portion, creating a a small downtown area. Um, and so I I I would want to speak uh with their land use attorney, along with our land use attorney, Melissa, um, on really what they were envisioning on on needing to amend uh the downtown specific plan. Um, if they wanted to, I know they mentioned, um, well, it helps us market if we can be specific uh to a company or a business um that we specifically allow creative office space. Um, and although our, again, our code allows for that, uh, if they wanted to have those exact words in our code, uh, it doesn't take a a long uh or a big process to to add that. We we can do what's called a zone text amendment, uh, and we just add that to our code, our existing code, specifically creative office space. If that's what they uh would like to see. Uh, but again, it already allows for that. So again, I think um the way it's set up now is pretty broad, and I think it captures everything that you as a council would like to see. But of course, I haven't uh heard anything recently. I'm just going off of what was uh put in the downtown specific plan.
Uh, we'll give an opportunity, Mr. Beck, to respond, and then then Mr. Patterson, and then the council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine. Go ahead, Mr. Beck.
Sure, no, I appreciate that. Um, I just make one comment, and that is, it's sort of the chicken or the egg scenario. Um, yes, the 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 specific plan um per Greg's comments is pretty broad. Um, however, um, in order to attract the end user, meaning whatever business goes there, whether it's creative office, whatever the case may be, um, those groups, their focus is whatever their business is. So if it's a content creation, that's what they do is content creation. They're not into establishing whether or not their use is acceptable or not. And so it's one of those scenarios that we really need, need to, and from my recommendation, provide guidance to what would be acceptable um so that while that specific plan is being updated or not updated, it gives not only the Charles Company, but it gives the end user, the groups that we want to be able to come and occupy the space, comfort and 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 understanding that your use will be acceptable, we're on the record of your use being acceptable, so that they can get past that part of it and get down to uh what they do. So in my example, would be content creation. Um, end users find it extremely difficult, it basically impossible, if they don't know that their use will be accepted. They'll never look at it because they're in the, they're in the business of creating content in this example. And so again, I I I to to Mr. To to Mayor, Mr. Mayor's um point about, well, putting the carpet for the horse. Um, sir, respectfully, the end user, the businesses that will come there, um, in my two-plus decades of experience, will need to know way in advance that their business will not only be accepted from a use standpoint, it enables them to appropriately plan. That's hence why I I I would like to, if possible, um, prior to the commencement, prior to the ending of of this meeting today, have a, have a, as strong an opportunity of understanding as to what you guys would like so that I can work um in conjunction with not only the Charles Company, but really go out to the, to the end users and 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 speak to those groups. Um, all of the suggestion measures of the business types that that I've referenced before, whether it's content or or creative space, or whatever the case may be, um, I have uh educated, uh, it's not a guess, it's not a, my opinion. I've actually gone and spoken to some of these groups very indirectly, very sort of um non-specific um about their interest in a a site such as this. And 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 that's why my recommendations were what they were.
Councilmember Patterson, and then uh Mayor Pro Tem Valentine. Go ahead, Councilmember Patterson.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, a few things, though. I think a lot of it's been said before I just came up, but I I would like to to support the position of our consultant, Chris Beck. I, you know, I think there is a difference between uh what technically can be allowed versus what's gonna help sell the deal. Um, and I think that Chris, uh, Mr. Beck has a lot of experience in like putting deals together and selling the deal, and we should definitely take that, that um, that guidance. Um, and so I guess my, my suggestion is, we um, regardless of Charles Company's looking to really bring a quality tenant themselves and develop the product, uh, the project, or sell the project, I don't care, right? I want to see a great project brought to the city of Hawthorne. And I think whatever we can do to help uh facilitate that, right, help sell the project, uh, I think it's, it's our responsibility to do so. Uh, if we help to amend a specific plan to speak to some specific uses or tenants in that amendment, and that helps to make the space more attractive to somebody wanting to buy it from the uh the Charles Company and build it and inhabit it, I think that's a great thing. Um, and so I guess my question um to uh to Mr. Beck, and I have a couple more questions after this, but uh, do you believe that that amending a specific plan to speak directly to some of those end users uh would support the process?
Yeah, I do. I do believe, I do believe amending it would, but I also believe, um, you know, it obviously takes time to do that. I think you can work um e- on parallel paths, meaning if there's some guidance given um as it relates to, here's what we believe as the elected body, uh, here's what we believe from a consensus standpoint, what we would support. Um, while then transitioning to the specifics of that quote-unquote specific plan, that would be enough to sort of really get going. So in essence, looking at what food groups, for lack of a better term, the elected body would like, it's filling in the types of foods in that group at that point. So if it's content, if that's what the group decides is a piece of the, of it, you just start reaching out to the content providers. Um, there's demand for that particular space. I don't mean to keep going back to content. It 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 doesn't have to be that. But the point is, once the food groups are established, the particular types of food will fit right on in. And that's, that will enable both groups to go start um speaking to those particular users in those particular user groups while also working on the legal piece of of updating the the uh, the specific plan. And I hope that answers your question, uh, Councilmember Patterson.
Yeah, it does. So I would like to suggest that we don't make any changes to the specific plan as it relates to the housing element, but that we do make some changes to uh incorporate some of these other uses. First uses specifically, I, I don't want to speak for the rest of council, but for myself, I'm open to all these other uses, right? So there's, the specific plan already speaks to hotel, and I've been housing at a certain density. I'm not really interested in making any changes to that. But I don't have an interest in telling them specifically, we want to see uh YouTube content creators, or we want to see um a flex office space for a technology company. But allowing all of those um, all all those uses to come, come to the space, definitely want to encourage some retail. Uh, we definitely want to have some, some retail revenue. But I would like to suggest putting all of those uses on the table um and letting them go ahead and find uh somebody that that'll like to take advantage of. I want to say all of those uses, um, you know, flex office, um, uh, you know, content creation, um, you know, and some of the other, I I know there are some other uses that you mentioned that there's a big market for today. Um, I I I, again, I don't think it's necessary to say a certain amount of square feet of any of these uses, maybe, except for requiring a certain amount of retail. I I think that's important to be able to certain amount of retail in any project to really benefit the community. But other than that, you know, I'm open to letting them bring a project together that's gonna benefit the community that has a combination. Of all those, or just even just one of those would be fine for me. So that's just my, my opinion. And uh, you know, if they want to incorporate some residential consistent with whatever was already allowed in the specific plan, that that'd be my two cents.
One of, one of those others, uh, real quickly, Councilmember, would also be studio space um for filming in studio. Again, just to keep it real broad for 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 everyone participating here, the wider the net casted, the more fish you catch, right? So the reality of it is, um, the wider and broader we are as it relates to the, to the flex users and the content and the studio and whatnot, enables us to touch those various um users within those, those particular user groups.
I think it just helps to see a Hawthorne regardless, to make the site as attractive to a buyer and user, regardless if he runs the property now, owns the property now, to make it attractive, make somebody want to come and snatch it up and do something with it. Uh, I think that's my other question is, I understand your suggestion is to verbally tell them, hey, we'll allow these different uses, they can go start shopping here, while we can currently make whatever uh adjustments to our specific plan and uh code. To my other question is, is that a big uh, big deal, a lot of work? It's really to Greg, to make these agi- these additions, say, to add studio and specifically say the words flex office and, and these other terms. Is that, is that a big thing in the butt for the city to do?
Doing, uh, amending our code, Councilperson, uh, Councilmember Patterson, i- is fairly easy. Uh, we could do a zone text amendment to add specific office types or specific multimedia types, whatever, um, you know, they feel comfortable they would need to have added so that they can adequately market the site. Um, like Chris said, you know, I I'm glad he's here because he's, he's actually reinforcing that, um, you know, we we can get started with with some pretty simple amendments, as long as we can get um the Charles Company to tell us uh what, what it, what it is that they, they want. Um, we don't yet know that yet. So I I'm, I'm hesitant to say how easy or difficult something would be until we exactly know what it is that they're looking to amend the specific plan uh for.
Real quick, Greg, and I apologize. I think we have to lead them to what we would accept and then fill it in from there. And again, I'm not the one, I, look, I work for everyone here in the city of Hawthorne and the constituents. It's just my, my opinion, it's like the dog chasing the tail. Unless you guide it to them, sort of like, if you build it, they will come. We have to guide them to what consensus-wise the electeds feel is acceptable um for the constituents of the city of Hawthorne, and then filling it in from there into the actual particular user demand. Um, I don't want to say the, is the easy part because all of these parts are very difficult, but that will give the end user group, whether it's any of those business fractions, it will give them competence, they'll be supported when they come here, but also further legitimize um uh their, their desires to be here. They're going to want to be here. It's a question of if we want them to be here, and I want to make that very clear to the group.
Yeah, and I I agree with that. Um, getting the direction, not only from, we got the direction from Charles Company, and now we're getting the direction from the council. And and with Chris Beck's background, he can then tell the council, um, you know, after you've fed us what you want, I I believe, Chris, you have that expertise to go back to the big developers and say, is this a feasible uh way of developing this property? This is what they'd like to see. Um, but you have that expertise to come back and say, I've talked to these developers, and yes, what you desire can or cannot, or with a little modification, uh, fit and and be properly marketed.
Well, and I also feel, one last thing is, going to those end users, right? Going to the end user group. Hey, we want this food group, and those foods that are the use, we want this type of user group, and these are the type of users that we've gone and and spoken to, and they would, they would welcome that. I think that's absolutely the, the.
Okay, let's move on to the next, uh, okay, it'll be Mayor Pro Tem Olivia Valentine. I want to say a few words, and then Councilmember Montero. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I wanted to uh to ask Chris, and I also want to direct this at Greg. Um, so it looks as if our code would. So it looks as if our code would currently accommodate. Almost any type of office building. So we're looking at uh, so I know that they had um. They had talked about tech office campus and so based on what Greg was saying, it appears that it appears. That our code as it's currently written would cover that, that 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 we would be able to accommodate that type of building. Am I correct?
Uh yes, Councilwoman, uh currently the code uh for that zone allows for office. And also in that same permitted use section of our code. It allows for similar uses as interpreted by by the planning department, so. Office is very broad, so whether it's creative office, tech office, um esports office. Design office, multimedia office, uh we would say it's it's office, they're all similar office type uses. They have their specific type of of uh I guess forte, but um that would be an easy interpretation for the planning department. Department to say tech office is an allowable use as it is written now.
And would it also accommodate creative media and production, which was another use that they proposed?
Uh yes, uh actually, one of the other permitted uses is multimedia or studio. So we have a section for studios, which includes media production. Uh and again, um if it's not exactly uh media. There's there's a broad interpretation to be done for similar establishment, so if it's a similar type of studio. Media uh production, um again, the uh planning department would interpret that as such.
So so because our, it it appears to me that our code is very flexible as it is and would allow for. Almost all of the uses they pre- they they suggested, one, they did suggest research and industrial, research and development industrial. I assume the code would not allow for that, is that correct?
I really need to look at it specifically for that, but even if it did, um if you wanted R and D. It's a very easy zone text amendment um to add research and development as a permitted use. In the commercial, uh mixed commercial use zone. You know, without having to go through a public input process uh like you did with your specific plan, because I know you did. You know, tour sites, you visited a site, you had invited constituents to come and tour and provide input. Um a zone text amendment is something we we do at the planning commission and and.
Thank you. So I have a preference for using the zone text amendment approach because it looks as if our. Our um our specific plan is all is very flexible and would accommodate. Almost any use that they have already proposed. So my suggestion would be that whatever we want to do, we let them know. We're very flexible, our t- our code is very flexible and if they want to make these changes. Um you know, that we invite them to come and 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 approach us. And um we we're certainly open to making a zone text amendment to accommodate their industry. I I would prefer to do it that way as opposed to a wholesale amendment of our specific plan.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that suggestion, uh Mr. Beckett and the Planning Director. Can you take note of that? Because I'm I'm. I guess uh, do you have anything else, Mayor Pro Tim? I'm ready to start myself.
No, I'm re- I'm through. Thank you.
Okay, uh one of the things that one of my council colleagues mentioned a little while ago was uh. Keeping the residential aspect uh as is. And what I'm also hearing again is like what Mayor Pro Tim said. Previous Mr. uh Mr. uh the Councilmember Patterson mentioned about the residential aspect and now Mayor Pro Tim is mentioning that. Yeah, I there's a lot of flexibility with what we have and uh uh Planning Director, you've acknowledged that. And so I really don't see what the, why Charles company would be so insistent on who. From what I hear, they want a wholesale uh revamping of the specific plan and uh I don't think it's called for that unless. They want to go out and touch the residential aspect, which I think we, maybe the majority of council I would like to think uh is already set on. Being that uh as generous as we have been in the past and keeping as is, so. I'd support just uh s- uh keeping the specific plan as is and making it any gradual zone amendments. As discussed by uh Planning Director and uh not just going out and doing this whole time delaying. Uh revamping of the specific plan, that's of concern. So uh the other thing I wanted to mention is that based on my conversations with industry uh. Uh industry leaders, uh developers that I've uh have communication up there. It's rumored that the Charles company is already in negotiation with a developer that's interested in. Having uh cinematic uses, studio uses already. So they're in negotiation, there's in talks and it seems very serious. So I would like confirmation of that because I'm hearing things from developers. Out there who I'm trying to recruit to take a look at this property and they've said that this thing has already been uh. Looks like it's headed for a sale, so I would like to. Task, you know, Planning Director and uh Mr. Beck to find that out and if if that's the case, I'd be very disappointed if. Charles company was not that forthcoming with that information for whatever to, for wherever strategic reason they're doing it, I. If that's the case, I would be very disappointed, but Mr. Beck and uh Mr. Planning Director?
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, um appreciate the comment. I I will say in 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 my world. Again, of of two decades of of being in the commercial world, things are always very hush hush and what. Might be a deal today may not be a deal tomorrow, so that may not be. Uh the Charles company, that could be that end user, that end studio space user. I think going back to Mayor Pro Tim's point on the zone text amendment, to me, makes a lot of sense. And the reality of it is, I believe the user groups. That are interested or will be interested in the site need to know that they'll be there with welcome arms. And so if the wind's blowing east today, it may blow west tomorrow. Either way it blows, they know they're going to be there with welcome arms and that will in essence get us to the. Get us to the finish line and that finish line being a project that that everybody's happy with. Again. I I'm not here to say whether or not the Charles company should build it, the next guy should build it or the next guy. But what I am here to say is regardless of who builds it, we need it built or I should say, you guys want to buy. I say we because I I I put myself as as one of your team members, but we want results at this point. And whoever's willing to get those results would be uh would be a a a welcome arms, I I believe from.
The last the last comment I wanted to make though, uh Mr. Beck, um and to and directed towards my city council colleagues is that. I mean, I've I think the biggest controversy, the biggest challenge for us was making sure we had a grip on the residential aspect. Like not losing control of that. And so I think we succeeded with the specific plan and I'm hearing multiple voices on my city council. Our city council um saying the same, but then, so then the second priority would be, hey. Some of the uses I'm hearing, I'm pretty, I'm concerned with the regards to the revenue aspect of it. What are these uses? How are these uses going to benefit the uh uh the benefit stream, uh the revenue stream to the city? Tax base wise, and I think we can't lose sight of that, so all to all my council colleagues, staff. I think we just, we have to equate what how what the use, the use uh it's it's equivalent tax revenue. Uh ba- uh towards the city would be, I'm hearing office space, but what are they going to produce? What's the point of sale? Nothing sometimes. So what? We just have this thing filled up and what can we say? You know, this is a golden opportunity for our city to be able to populate. Doesn't have to be fully commercial or restaurants, we would like to see commercial restaurants and res- uh entertainment for our community. They've been begging and that's their biggest thing or some of these other uses where there's something being produced that this is considered the point of sale. We can't lose sight of that, you know, filling it up with all these non-tax uh producing uses. It's not a, it's it's not a, it's not a victory for us really, it's just a victory for whoever's, you know, the developer is and you know. There has, we have to have a very balanced approach, but I mean, when you buy a property in a city. You know, you're subject to what that council is uh, it's it's like or its desires are. So the bottom line is, it's not like, you know, we need to look out for our community and uh we also, it's sure we have to be considerate, but. We just need to equate how much tax base, uh how much tax revenue and what's the benefit economically towards the city? I don't think we can just move ahead without considering that. Mr. Beck and Mr. Greg, well, I'll let Greg and then. Mr. Beck respond.
Sure, um you know, I do want to make one comment and and that is that. You know, Ms. Camacho from Logan Loeb, she's a well-respected land use attorney. And again, you know, I'm basing my discussions with you on what I had heard uh the other day. Um but I would welcome the opportunity to to meet and talk with them because. You know, uh if if there is a a reason that I didn't hear or or see. For compelling to to make an amendment to the specific plan. Now I'd like to hear that and and listen to that and so I think it it uh really warrants a discussion uh with them more on a. I guess a geeky level of of planning because maybe she was giving a thousand foot view. For the audience and there was something that um you know, she didn't uh go down into um that was really compelling. For an amendment to the specific plan, so I would welcome that opportunity to speak with her, but on the surface uh of what I had heard. Councilwoman Valentine, I think hit it on the nose that, you know, a lot of the things that mentioned could just be done by zone text amendments, but again. There could be something uh that she was really thinking, but just uh didn't explain it uh during the meeting and. And so I'd welcome that opportunity to to meet and and speak with her.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Beck, any comments and then we'll go to Councilmember Montero.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, um your point is is more than well taken, it's it's actually uh. A piece of the of the overall peripheral pie that we all have to obviously keep an eye on and that is the tax generated piece and so. Although we've talked about flex and we've talked about studio and we've talked about content. I sort of look at the peripheral twenty twenty-five acre pie, how do we want to divvy it up? In other projects, what they've done is 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 a mix of uses. Little residential, some studio, commercial flec- uh excuse me, studio, creative office. With some retail on the perimeter with some green space, sort of inviting the general community to come in and utilize not only the restaurants and the retail piece. And the green space, but also encouraging those that work in those environments to spend their disposable money at lunch or dinner. Or client events within the twenty to twenty-five acre campus or in other parts of the city as well, so. I I I think you made a great point, I want to reiterate the fact that the the studio sort of flex office is a component to it. But I think the other components um are just as important and I think it's up to the to the elected body to determine. Within range of percentage, hey, we'd like to see, you know, X amount percentage of retail, X amount of percentage of green space. X amount percentage and and again, it can, it can be rough and we can move it around, but. Understanding that all those are critical components so that the the Charles company can go back and 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 re- really recalibrate their plans. To show our vision with the with all of those mixed uses together and when I say mixed uses. You know, the the studio, the office, the retail, the green space, the the resi- residential um is critical. And and I want to make sure that you know um uh Mr. Mayor and and to the council that 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 is a a piece of it. And and we are cognizant or I am cognizant and I know Greg is as well.
Councilmember Alex Montero and then uh Councilmember Reyes English, Councilmember Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, actually, you know, uh I do, I do agree with Ms. Valentine about because because we know that. That we we do not want to go do a whole downtown specific plan or amend our zone based on Charles company. Ideal, what what they want, uh but that is why I asked them to bring a draft of what they want to be amended. So for us to look at it uh later and say, okay, this is do it, this is not doable, right? Um but I also agree with Greg because that is what I I pointed out to Ms. Ms. Camacho. That well, uh even we have these downtown specific plan, but also we have the the CUP model, you know, uh. Uh condition use permit that you can build anything you want if the planning department and the planning commission agree upon. I do agree that we do need to look at the at the mixed model uh uh of different business. Uh and 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 continuing to push uh for for food court and some type of uh. Who knows, uh entertainment that can can go along with the creative media production. With the tech office campus, uh even with the uh, you know, the uh. You call it the R and D industrial area, right? So those are the kind of things that we want to keep keep in mind. And to, if we're going to do a uh zone tax amendment, so we can, we can keep in mind those things. That is viable for a city and 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 will bring some uh uh tax dollar, tax revenue to to. To our uh general fund. The other things that I want, I want to ask some question uh to to Greg and Beck. For example, if we were talking, if we're talking about the uh the mixed use and 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 that which which involve residential. Can we amend our code and also the uh the specific uh plan? To say that if they do any type of residential should be condominiums or townhomes, not apartments. Can 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 we allo- are we allowed to do that?
I I would think um that maybe that's something you would do when it came down to an actual development type agreement. Where you could add those specifics in, um but that's something that we would need to research and. And uh discuss with um, you know, the the Charles company team.
And the other uh the other uh uh issue that I have, it's not an issue, but a lot of people have pointed out, even during the. All the communication in the past, that said that how come Hawthorne does not have some type of a a code or or ordinance? That say if you not develop this parcel in three years, the city would take it by receiving ship or something like that.
I think that's more probably for our land use attorney to to answer, I'm going to defer that to Melissa.
Okay, thank you.
Melissa, go ahead.
Can everyone hear me now? I was muted. Hi, great, thank you. Well, first of all, I wanted to also thank the city council, the mayor and the city council for. Including the planning department in this conversation, um it's a really important topic and we've been talking about it for a long time. And we definitely wanted to share our perspective, um for a planning perspective. Um I know staff has wanted to do that, so I just wanted to thank you for that and all of your comments so far are great comments that. We're hoping we can take to have a direct conversation with the representatives of the Gabay. Company um and to their attorneys um so that we can come up with something specific that we can bring back. And I think Greg was right, we have to have that um geeky conversation about what tweaks need to be made into our in our code or even the specific plan. So um I I really appreciate that just from my perspective and I wanted to just make sure I said that. Um to answer your question, Councilmember Montero, um yes, there's a lot of discussion that happens about. Tools that you have in your municipal toolbox, right? Um to deal with vacant properties or blighted properties. Bless you, I know that sometimes we talk about liens and and you've also talked about receiverships. This is, it's a very complicated conversation that needs to be had, it's it's part of the tools that we have as a city. So I'll tell you now, um some things we can do and some things we cannot, so there's been things that have been brought to the council. Um that are things that cannot be done, um and I'm really glad that you're asking that question because we can put something together and let you know what our options are. But I think that what you guys are doing now, which is having a a a real conversation. Um and I'm really glad Mr. Beck is here because he has that component that we don't have as staff, he knows the economics and he knows the financing. Um having him be brought to the conversation is really going to help us, um so. To answer your question, it's it's actually a lot more complicated, but those are things that we can look at, I think the first thing to do is to have these conversations. and figure out what we can bring back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montero?
Yeah, so so just to keep in mind, because, you know, uh, the 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 downtown-specific plan, you know, calls for the mixed use. And that is where we we all understood that, and, uh, you know, any project can be built there, but with common sense that have that have benefits to the city and 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 not to be determined to the our community, especially to the residents uh, on Burge and and on that, uh, um, east side of the mall. So I, you know, like I said, we just have to keep working to to see, uh, and one of the thing that, um, sometimes even the en- entitlement, even if, uh, if let's say if you would have, uh, in the in the in the near future, uh, gave, uh, Charles Company some entitlement and then if he goes and 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 sell the the building, it's not a bad thing, right? Because that's what we want. We want that mall to be out of the hands of Charles Company in the in the near future. So, uh, I just say let's continue to work, but create a beautiful project that like we talk about, uh, mixed use and some, uh, flex users, uh, some, some maybe, you know, food court, uh, you know, like Mr. Beck said, with some green space, uh, maybe, uh, you know, uh, one of those whole food supermarkets that have, uh, you know, organic foods. Uh, so let's talk about all of that. Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Montero, uh, thank you for your comments and all my co- all my co- colleagues so far. Uh, Councilmember Reyes English is up next, but I'd like to just comment that, uh, it sounds like, I think, I think what I'm hearing from you, Councilmember Montero, is that we can't even look at our zoning code unless they start giving us general ideas to what they really like intend. So we can see if, uh, you know, if there, if the specific plan already encompasses those uses. So we need to start here, we need to hear more from the Charles Company when it comes to that. Am I correct or wrong?
Yeah, and that is what, you know, in in, uh, last, um, last meeting we had Monday, when we have that meeting with them, I I asked, uh, Camacho and the and the other lawyer, Paul Hoodner, to, I gave them four weeks to give us a draft of things that they want to be amended on that specific plan and also on the on our zoning. Uh, but but that is what I told them. I said, look, we we open for business. We can do, you know, CUPs in any other project that you want to bring to us. Uh, so we can facilitate that 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 conversation. So even if tomorrow somebody would come to us and say, we're going to buy the mall and build this, there is a way to do it. So then the Charles Company, I know that they stolen for time. That's what they do.
So, um, so I guess, um, I would like to join you in reiterating that action item that we gave them at the last meeting and not to, not for them not to lose sight of that, that that's very important for us. So I guess this is a reiteration on that. Um, Councilmember Angie Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I've been patiently just sitting and listening. Um, the last response with regards to whether or not the city has governance over private property and making property owners develop or not. Uh, city attorney from city attorney, I'd like to see a legal confidential on whether or not, what's the legal ratification ratifications or or not that the city could take on these types of, uh, of, um, questions posed on whether or not that's something the city could could do or not. I mean, it's very simple. I know there was, you know, a vague response with whether or not, you know, we continue the conversation, but that's not what we're trying to do. We need an answer. So if you could just give us a legal confidential on whether or not the city has any, uh, remedy over uh, private property owners in making them develop or not. Very simple. And then, and then second, um, I liked the conversation with regards to, um, all the potentials that this mall could have, or I should say this site should have, not necessarily the mall. Um, I keep hearing office space, office space. Are are we talking about a, uh, like a WeWorks type of, you know, uh, space? The reason I'm asking this is because, um, as Greg said, it 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 could go on and on and on, the interpretation as to what type of administrative space they're looking for. But obviously, the amendments to code is, you know, up to the council's discretion. So, um, having said that, I I welcome uh, everything at this point, but I also want them to be able to give us, the Charles Company, to give us, um, correct and, um, uh, correct information and real information. So, uh, if there are, uh, entities that are looking to to inquire space at the location, um, that would be great if we knew, uh, in advance who they are. Um, it's not going to take away from accommodating code amendments, but I think it's important that there's, um, you know, real honest, uh, discussions, but more importantly, transparent discussions and information that is being given, uh, on both sides. Um, and I understand you can't just, you know, change everything just to accommodate this one entity, you know, how fair is that, right? Look at that response from others. How fair is that? But at the end of the day, we did exactly just that. We did the specific plan changes to accommodate the mall. So sounds counts kind of, uh, you know, contradicting, but that we did exactly that way back when. So um, it's my hope that that whole area, that whole space in between one hundred and twentieth and El Segundo uh, captures, uh, a lot more, uh, revenue streams for the city. And I appreciate, you know, the mayor's response with regards to, you know, benefiting the city through through revenues and stimulating our economy, and I agree a hundred percent. Um, and that's the whole focus of what of what that area could ultimately look like. And that's a come, you know, again, my discussion with regards to temporary moratoriums on car washes was important. So what's the true vision here? Everybody has, you know, their 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 opinion, but at the end of the day, we have to collectively come together and have a consensus as to what's going to benefit the city for 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 the future, for the future. And it's been a long time coming, you know, that, uh, we we need to do something. And and we're pressed, we are pressed. I don't know if we're in a hurry, but we are pressed to finally do something at that location. So whatever we need to do to use discretion and to to use amendments that would ultimately assist in these efforts, I'm all for it. But I want transparency. I want transparency from the Gabay. I want camp camp, uh, transparency from the Charles Company. And I want them to be able to let us know if there is a discussions with regards to the mall being sold, uh, in the fourth, in the in the in the near future, you know, Mr. Beck, you could have that conversation and just ask them straight up and then come back to us and tell us whether or not that's true. And then at any given time, we could ask them that question. But it's also true, you know, uh, there's, 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 uh, plans for sales one day and the next day it doesn't happen. So uh, I'd like to finally get that, um, you know, answered, whether or not it is true that there's negotiations currently. So but, uh, thank you also for Councilmember Patterson, because, uh, again, we have to be open. We have to be open. I'm not trying to say give away the farm, but we have to be open for what what would benefit the city. What would benefit the city? And most importantly, uh, revenue sources.
Okay, um, it looks like the meeting is close to winding down. Uh, we have another council member who's going to be making comments. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Beck wants to, will probably want to speak right now. But I just want to make sure that everybody, I guess, everybody, what we've been hearing today here is reiteration of things that we've asked of the Charles Company that they owe us. We want to see those things so we can help make our decisions. Uh, Mr. Beck and, uh, the planning director have, uh, gauged, have sensed the temperature of the council. And I would like to think that, uh, from what I heard, we are basically kind of almost, all all of us were headed in in the si- in the same direction, very similar direction as to what our desire for the council is. So you it's, we don't have to reiterate, we don't have to re- summarize, we don't have to summarize all that again. You know, Mr. Beck's been taking copious notes, uh, and the planning director as well. So you guys got, you guys like that word, copious? It's been a while since I used it. But copious, I'm seeing you. And so, uh, we don't have to repeat everything and you, but you've heard, you know, all the comments, concerns, um, doubts, suspicions, everything. I mean, we've, we've been dealing with this, uh, company for a while and, uh, I'm hearing from industry leaders out there with regards to the real estate stuff that there's already a transaction in place. You know, so come on. But, uh, Mr. Beck, can you kind of, you, do you want to speak or do you want to give, uh, Councilmember Patterson the the last word, uh, the last, uh, comment from council? Would you like to li- listen to him or would you, you want to say anything right now?
I like to listen to everyone. I love to listen to him and I think the interim city attorney had his hand up as well. And I was not trying to be a cheeky comment, Mayor, but I do want to make one thing clear, um, or really ask the group a question um, at the end. So if I could, I just want to make sure that I'm memorializing everything correctly on behalf so that um, the council's, um, needs and wants are met when we meet with them in four weeks. So why don't I give Mr. Patterson, or excuse me, Councilmember Patterson, um, the opportunity to speak as well as interim city attorney Ewing. And then if I could, uh, uh, have a few moments at the end, I I would really appreciate that.
Oh, it's real quick, though. Um, uh, last meeting, there was a comment about they had a deal on the table and that uh, his previous staff had kind of killed that deal. And I'm just personally curious about if there's any information about that, that out there. I don't know if you need some more information about that, Mr. Beck or 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 interim city manager or city attorney. Um, I'm just for myself, just kind of curious about, you know, what that was and what kind of interest did we have at one point in that site? Um, but I'd sit up with the interim city attorney myself.
I I do have an answer to that, Councilmember Patterson. I can handle it now or at the end, whichever.
Yeah.
Jerry, can we hear from the attorney? He's been patiently waiting, I think.
Thank you, through, uh, through the mayor. Thank you, uh, Councilmember English. I I wanted to clarify, uh, your request, Councilmember English. So I delivered to you, you know, what you requested. So I I heard you say that you're looking for a legal confidential regarding the the issue of, uh, the tools that the city would have available to, uh, communicate to a private property owner. Uh, it's desire that property be developed within a time period certain and that if that property isn't developed within that time period certain, that the city, uh, would have available to it, uh, certain mechanisms to to make that happen. Is that accurate?
It's accurate. It's accurate. I I I, again, whether or not we have the legal authority of doing that on a private property. And and if we don't, you know, tell us that. If there's a timeline, tell us that. But yes, you you've got that correct. Thank you.
Thank you. I was I was looking for that direction and also consensus from the council on that.
Yeah, no, that sounds good, Mr. City, uh, interim city attorney. Yeah.
Thank you.
And there there has to be, there there has to be something statewide, state of statute that addresses this man. I mean, just like, just like we can go and, uh, uh, go into receivership with private houses that are just having a hoarding going on and weeds and, you know, just just repair. There has to be something applies here. Thank you, Councilmember Reyes English, and thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Beck, you have answered that question.
Yeah, oh, so, Mr. Beck, go ahead and, uh, close everything out. I think we're at that point.
Yes, sir.
Melissa, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, to answer Councilmember Patterson's question, uh, yes, the 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 subject property was marketed, I believe, is in two thousand and eighteen um, with one of the large firms. There's four firms, an international firm, mine being one of them. They had listed it with a firm by the name of Cushman and Wakefield, which is, uh, one of the largest big four firms in the world. Um, and they did receive some traction in the marketplace. The difficult nature of the transaction, from my understanding, and again, I wasn't firsthand involved, but, um, the feedback I've received in the marketplace was um, the lack of understanding of what could actually be done there. Meaning if the Charles, if there was a transaction consummated, would that group be able to then be able to build what was being marketed? And the way that marketing package, um, was presented was a a multitude or plethora of different options. Um, and so that was the biggest challenge is when there's, when there's, when there's not clear direction. Again, back to my original statement, end users end up throwing their arms up and saying, well, I can't go on, uh, maybe, maybe, maybe this happens, maybe that doesn't have it. I need certainty because I need to create content or I need to create, um, uh, rest, uh, food for my, for my, for my restaurant or whatever the case may be. And and again, that was the feedback I got. Real quickly to Councilmember, um, Reyes English's point, um, I just used, uh, creative office and office as an example. Uh, by no means does it need to be that or have to be that or all of that or none of that or whatever. I was just trying to use that as an example. Um, I do want to just confirm that I have a clear, crystal-clear understanding of the council's direction so that my meeting with, um, the, uh, Charles Company on Monday is a productive one and the results in the meeting in four weeks is to the liking into what the council wants. So if you just give me a minute, I would appreciate it. My understanding of it is, um, the council's open to ideas. The council's open to zone text amendments potentially based upon the 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 specific plans. So if it's something not, that's not in the specific plan, that you'd be open to a zone text amendment um, for that particular use and that those uses are on the table, that that, um, creative office, content studio is an option in conjunction with retail and destination, green space, uh, uh, and perhaps even some residential. Um, is that fair? Is am I properly framing that?
Uh, Councilmember Montero, I think you want to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, yes, you framed pretty well, uh, um, back. So, yeah, so so we we want those those conversations to to continuing. Um, but, uh, your meeting on Monday is with, uh, also involve our planning department?
Absolutely. Greg will be participating as well. And I I apologize for not mentioning that.
Yeah, because because we do want to find out exactly because on, uh, in four weeks, I want to see what they're going to, you know, throw at us, you know what I mean? Because I want them to give us a draft, what they envision about the, uh, tax amendment code or the downtown-specific plan, what are they are looking into to change? And then for us to react on 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 their, on their proposal, right? So that's the main thing we want to know. And and also, you know, Mr. Mayor mentioned about if if, uh, if if Charles Company is in the negotiation of selling this mall, right? We need to know, we need to know that in for fact. And and then we are open to to discuss, okay, if you willing to sell, uh, what is this new owner wants to do? So let's talk to this, you know, let's begin this conversation too. So then they don't be in a a a catch of guard, right?
Well, and 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 to your point, Councilmember, everybody, and I don't know if everyone can see my hands. If you can't, it's sort of like everybody comes together like this, right? You've got Charles, if they're selling to end this group over here, that we're all sort of together, working together to get the end result that you guys, you know, desire for the constituents of the city of Hawthorne.
Yeah, and 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 keep, uh, uh, Mr. Beck, keep insist about about our downtown-specific plan, if they want to do mixed use, like residential mixed use with business and and commercial and and residential, to keep in mind that we have twenty-four units per acre uh, on that downtown, on that specific plan. So make sure you keep hitting that because we know they don't like that number. They like, they like more the seventy-ninth number, right? So
Understood.
So big make sure because because we 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 want to, we want to accommodate, but not at the, not at the, uh, you know, seventy-nine or even fifty or nothing, none like that, okay?
Good to, just so, so Councilmember Montero and into the other elected, um, officials or elected group body, I should say. Was my synopsis correct in terms of sort of that that plethora or that that sort of mix of creative and studio and some retail operation, green and resi and all that? Is that fair?
Food court. Yes.
Mortgage board. There you go.
Food court too, okay?
Entertainment opportunities for our residents and, uh, dining opportunities and some element of, uh, commercial too, so that our people, our people here in Hawthorne can stay here and not have to go celebrate birthdays outside, have to always have to go shopping for everything outside. So
Mr. Mayor, real quick into the group, go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember Patterson, sorry.
I agree, I agree, uh, with with Mr. Mayor, uh, there should be a percentage of retail required. I don't know what that percentage should be. We should, regardless of what comes there, there needs to be some retail.
I agree with the man also.
Can I, uh, real quick, uh, Mr. Beck, uh, I you, I think your synopsis is good or else somebody would have, uh, spoken out, spoken out.
I figured that was the case, but you know, I gave it a second try just in case.
Mr. Beck and, uh, along with, uh, planning director, uh, uh, can you also give us a white paper? I guess this is a a white paper on the very- I guess this is a a white paper on the various uses that have been mentioned and the tax revenue benefit to the city. Uh assigns, assign a tax, try to just assign a tax benefit to the city if it's numeric. For if you can, percentage wise, or what kind of taxes on operations, typical numbers that we get. Like all the way, every single use, like the the studios, the 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 restaurant, the eateries, the entertainment. The the residential aspect of it too, I mean, because everybody's, these guys always come at us with residential and. It's a pittance what we end up getting through the pass through. Um so please assign that, uh give it a a good faith uh look. So that we can uh take a look at that. Mr. Planning Director, I think in your department could also, you work, uh contribute to this, please.
Um you, I I would definitely, um Chris, is that something your team can come up with? Tax rates, property tax rates for residential, sales tax rate for retail restaurant and other other revenues?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think one quick thing, we can work in conjunction. Uh but determining the percentages will enable us to give a more accurate number. So it's sort of a chicken or the egg, again, I hate to go there. I think we can satisfy um the council's request, the mayor's request. Um but understanding, once we give sort of the guidance to the Charles Company and to consultants on Monday. Once they've determined how they wanna lay that out, we can then backtrack, Greg, and 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 work together in giving uh, giving a rough estimation uh per the request.
You can, you can give a subjective, a subjective uh characteristic of the tax revenue right now. Uh but then when you get there, uh you can give us something now with, for each of those uses, subjective characteristic with regards to the tax rate. Uh but then if you really need them to kinda give us that so we can determine the spread, actual spread of what we probably would be getting, that's. I mean, that's fine, but I I want, I would like to see something soon with regards to.
It's a little, it's not as easy as, I mean, it's, it makes sense and I get it, but I mean, if we're building ninety-nine percent one product type. And one percent another product type, then the numbers won't be accurate. But I mean, I can give you, if we just do a twenty-five, 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 twenty-five slice it. We can do it that way. Again, I'm not trying to make it complex, Mr. Mayor. I wanna give you the the answer to your question, but also be accurate.
Assume something like that. Just assume something as an exercise. We need to see something. We need to start, we start, need to start envisioning something.
Understood.
Please, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, yeah, but what, okay, when you talk about numbers, but then also to keep. If we talk about those flex users, that that, for example, sometimes does not generate uh sales stack, right? So then you have to also have to look uh how much it's gonna, it's gonna bring to the city on on licensing, right? Um like business license, annual revenues, or or uh, you know, to 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 come up with the I. A number that this business, okay, they're not gonna produce sales stacks, but they're going to pay us annually on business license this much. And 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 basis on, like say, if it's a movie studio, so you know they they maybe they generate a hundred thousand dollars a year. So then we know that a hundred thousand, we're going to come up with some some business taxes on that on the end of the year. Follow me, Greg, uh Beck?
No, that, the Mr. uh, Mr. Councilmember Montero, yeah, points are well taken, absolutely. So if we, yeah, so take the, take all that into consideration, Mr. Beck, please.
We will do that. We will also do our best to do some assumptions as you recommended, which is. Of those office users, there will be a percentage that utilize the retail component that will be part of the project. So we'll, we'll do our best to extrapolate that at that stage as well.
How many people's gonna eat food?
Right, and who's gonna stop, I mean, right, I mean, you know, there's always a percentage, right?
Well, you know what? They're not giving us anything, so we have to come up with a scenario ourselves, at least to extrapolate from there.
Uh uh uh, I mean, it's the mayor, you need to, you need to realize that, you know, a lot of this stuff, you know, because then when we start talking about these big things. Okay, so how much we're gonna get on on you, you, you know, the uh utility tax, for example, you know, how many, you know. All these kinds of stuff, you know, how much, you know, so it's a lot of.
That's good.
It's a lot of numbers that have to be tabulating.
Okay, all right, so um I I guess we can say that uh, Mr. Beck and uh Mr. Planning Director. And along with the interim city attorney, uh you guys have direction, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds good. So we, well, do we have another meeting? When are we, what, so give us, give us the chronology, Mr. Beck, and maybe then we can figure out when we meet with you next. What's the chronology, as you understand, as to what's going to happen?
Yes, sir. So so uh the next step will be, um Greg and I will meet with um. With the owner of the property Monday and their team and provide the feedback um that was established during this meeting. While working um concurrently with uh providing you some of those assumptions. As it relates to the tax generated revenue based upon the the multifaceted smorgasbord of use. Um at which point, my understanding is in four weeks. Um and I don't remember the exact date, so you have to pardon me. I believe it's the nineteenth, but I could be wrong on that. Um I believe it's the night, Wednesday, the nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
All right. My brain's coming back to work. I was vaccinated two days ago, so the cloud is going away now.
Okay.
Uh but anyway, that that would then be with the massive group um at that point.
So we can finalize the meeting, uh should, um so should we? Does the council feel that we should insert another meeting with Mr. Beck after he meets with them? Or just wait, wait for the meeting uh that where they're, where they're gonna present?
No, we should, we should have a meeting before that.
Okay, so.
Nineteen.
So the nineteenth, okay, so let's.
We can be ready because based on that conversation, they can give us heads up.
So so you're gonna meet with them this uh twenty-six, April twenty-six, and then they're gonna present. March, April, May nineteenth, so we should meet with you before then. Is that what you're saying, Councilmember Montero also?
Yes.
Okay, so the nineteenth, so where the heck are we right now?
So what about May thirteen?
Let's, let's, let's do the same time, three o'clock. Is everybody available for that?
I I I will be, I just wanna make it clear to the group, it's my second vaccination the day before, so I'm not sure how mu- how I will be. So I apologize, I don't wanna hold up the.
You look like you're in good shape, it's not gonna affect you.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, looks can be deceiving.
Okay.
Yeah, we could, we could always reschedule if something happened to you.
I was hoping for the seventeenth if possible, but if that's too close to the.
Oh, um, let's, let's go. Is that a council meeting date?
No, that's a Monday. Uh we can, we can go seventeen in the afternoon.
That would be ideal for me if possible.
That's it.
Everyone about, council colleagues, council colleagues, are you guys okay?
Yeah, it's fine, we do seventeen and three.
Meet with Beck.
What time were you thinking about on the seventeen?
Three?
Yeah, later.
Later?
Three is good.
I'm saying three's good.
Oh, later in the day is, you're good with later in the day like this, okay.
Three, three works great for me. And I appreciate everyone accommodating uh my schedule, thank you.
All right, council colleagues.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Mayor, quick question.
Okay.
I wanna find out to Mr. Beck if uh 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 our expert uh on the um zoning. Melissa, land use, uh she's gonna be on that meeting? And they might bring, they might bring the Camacho woman, so she had our expert woman there too.
So we we have our counterbalance on that.
Yeah.
Yes, my understanding is she's been invited to the meeting and 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 will be participating, um from my understanding of it.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, council colleagues. Uh very great meeting, constructive, everybody. I think, like I said, we're all in sync here. Okay, so uh.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments from uh council members or staff, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Bye.
Good night, goodbye.